Good evening, welcome to the Park Township's March meeting. And we're gonna start with a nomination by.
We thank you all for the opportunity for our meeting and your guidance. We are grateful for the spirit of operation and the resources you have given us and the state of our residents. As we meet today and split some open parts in meeting. Have us tonight decisions with integrity and compassion. Plus, our township is leaders of essence and then serve like community importance.
I'm glad you could do that over the United States or America and to be very following permission standards. One nation, one liberty, God, and this is all good learning justice. Well, good to see all of you in on this beautiful evening. Thanks for coming inside. So we have a good agenda, Evans. So I will take any motions to add or leave from the agenda. If there is any place to so. Hi. The agenda passes. On the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes, payment of the bills in the VA enterprise fireworks display. As we have seen that VA request multiple times over the years. Decision was made to put in the consent agenda. We could pull that out if someone requests, but. I'll raise that question. Please.
On the last page, it says thirty, Article thirty, it should have been Article twenty.
Okay.
And then also on the motion to adjourn, it should have been six zero instead of seven zero, we ended at six zero.
Alright. Alright, now we got, got those, alright, okay, with those edits. Anything else? Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Thanks, Warren. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, the consent agenda passes, thank you. Public comment, here we go. Let's see, we're moving to a first of our two public comment periods. We appreciate your participation in the meeting. You have the right to address the board on any issue you like. It's your time to public comment. We respectfully will listen, but not engage in the conversation. They seem a little odd, but we do have an agenda and township business to attend to. If you have further discussion, desire for the discussion on the topic, please schedule appointment with our township manager, Mr. Pink. And if this is awkward, please contact me directly. In order to keep the meeting moving, this won't be a problem. Please limit your comments to a couple of minutes. And thank you in advance for your comments, please.
My name is Bill Clare. I live here in Marigold Woods, two eighty-one Little Station. The state of Michigan is facing a major problem.
If you could.
The deer population.
Speak to the microphone a little clearer. We have people online who actually listen.
The deer population in Michigan is going up rapidly and the number of hunters is going down. And what happens? That comes into an exponential function and every year it gets worse. The county of Kent just recently, a couple of months ago, had a agenda item to discuss that very item. What they did, I'm not sure. But here in Park Township, we have a burgeoning deer problem. Just yesterday, there were eight deer in my backyard munching away at various things. And by observing, it looks like by the spring, there'll be fourteen deer in my backyard. Every year, the deer eat and destroy the landscaping in Marigold Woods. To the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars for everybody. I personally have spent hundreds of dollars on deer repellent. To worthless stuff, okay? Something has to be done. This board needs to take some sort of action. I have contacted the DNR and other people. But the population of deer in this township is gonna go up every year. They need to be trapped and relocated. They need to be culled. Or they need to be fed something that will prevent them from getting pregnant. Otherwise, this township is gonna be overrun with deer in the very near future. I'm tired of paying hundreds of dollars a year on repellents and replacing my landscaping. My neighbors are the same way. They don't like it. What the solution is, I'm not sure, but I know it has to be done something within the near future. And that's all I have to say today.
If I can make a suggestion, make a one with the start thinking of myself, we can talk further. We would like to understand a little bit more and see if we can't. Start the conversation about what you're discussing, so thank you. Any other comments in the audience? Okay, hearing none, a close public comment, thank you. As a reminder of why we're here, the vision of Park Township is to be a family-friendly, connected community that values our natural features, a cultural character and recreational opportunities. That's our mission. We correctly listen and lead, providing exceptional services and amenities while carefully stewarding our resources. We'll do this with the values of integrity, respect and being genuine. As a reminder of why we do what we do, so thank you. So moving into the department reports, we all had significant reports to go through. Any, any comments or questions for the team that's here or for us to follow up on? I have one comment. I just want to say thank you to the assessing team. This was the team that was here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, listening to appeals on property taxes. I want to identify them by name. Al Nightcamp and Assistant Elizabeth Vandenbosch and teammate Michelle Bellhoff is our permanent. But I want to call out especially the three volunteers that we have on our assessment team. David Smiggy, Linda Dyker, and Andrew Zorman. And you might recall Aaron Andrews Zorman, we approved him, I think, a couple of months ago to be on the support committee. They received over fifty appeals, I think it was around fifty appeals on property tax. And they spent three, almost three days here in the room behind us, listening to our neighbors appeal taxes. And you know, these are very highly qualified people. And I just want to say thank you publicly on behalf of the board and Mr. Vang, they do a bang up job and represent as well. So it's fun. And I, in the meantime, I asked Mr. Al Nightcamp to give us a high level update on assessing sometime this summer. So he'll post his busy seat in the park. So he'll come and make a short presentation about where we stand. It's one of those hidden activities that the board, we don't get too involved in, but it's a significant thing in our township. So, alright, public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, before we move on to public hearing, can I make one announcement?
Please.
I asked our newest parks employee, Jordan Zeit, to be here. Jordan, would you go ahead and stand up? And I think this is her first, is this your first board meeting?
Um, the first one I've spoken at.
Spoken at, so. And I, Jordan's recreation report is on your dais. I just wanted to point out, Jordan has done an excellent job over the last few months. But she has, she's been here for six or five or six months, last few months that I've been working with her. We are really lucky to have her and I want to acknowledge the work that she's done. I encourage you to take a look at this. This came to us on your dais late. I take responsibility for that. But there's, there's some really action-packed stuff in here. And I want to point out our recreation logo that you have at the top. That's gonna be our new branding for Parks and Countryside Recreation Department. So with that, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thanks, George. Thanks, George. Thanks for leaving the team or leave, we don't have a team, we have a link. Alright, moving on to the public hearing, we need to do a budget. A budget public hearing on the budget that we have. Before we get to the budget, is there any questions on the budget? I know Shar, you had spent some time with our CFO and if you have any questions, observations. But the budget was discussed last month. Approval happens this month. So any questions or comments about the budget, it was in your package with some modifications that we have requested. But that's where we're at right now. So any questions or comments?
No, yeah, I spent some time this afternoon with Connie and gave a very good overview. And I'm sorry, I couldn't make the, the meeting last, last time, so I'm all set.
Okay, alright. Any, any other comments about the budget? Right, so we have to, we have to open up public hearing and see if there's any comments on the budget. So I will open, open the floor for any public comment on the budget that we already spread to group. Any comments, any questions? Seeing no one is interested, I mean, on the budget, we're close to having a hearing. And now we go into the, let's see.
It's a resolution, so it can be a voice for it or it can be a. Roll call, whatever is your position.
I would, I'd recommend on something significant as this, as a right now.
I don't need the opinion, please. But according to the action, we have to talk about the budget and just like.
Oh, okay, I, thank you. No, you're not a man who are only into the right, right key, it's like Jeff. Alright, yes, on page on our seventy-three. Four, seventy-three, four, five, and seventy-six is the budget adjustments. Any questions on the budget adjustments before we, we approve those adjustments and then go to the budget? For twenty-five, six. Right here, hearing none, I'm taking motion to approve the budget adjustments. Thanks, Jim. Brian, thank you, Brian. Alright, all in favor of the budget adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, so now we move on to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This is the justice for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. This is for the new budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's on page, I guess, seventy-seven. Well, just one comment I'd like to make. There's a slight, a comment, you know, you can't underestimate what this comment is. It talks about state funding after spending a day at capital last week, Tuesday. When you talk about state revenue sharing, that item alone is worth, kind of. Generally, how much percentage of our budget is state revenue sharing?
In total, it's about twenty-two percent.
Twenty-two percent.
The highest of the general funds of any resource.
Yeah, so twenty-two percent of our budget comes from the state and they have the discretion to move that number around any way they want every year. And thank goodness we have good representation in Lansing from our Michigan Township Association. They have fought since two thousand eight when they significantly reduced the state revenue sharing to fight for townships around the, around the state to get revenue sharing back. This is the first year every township in the state has received state revenue sharing. Now, I don't think we ever went down to zero on ours. But there was small townships that ultimately lost funding from the state. The state revenue sharing is from our sales tax. And again, our representatives fought for this and we, we heard the stories behind it. And so it took years to get this back on into the budget. But again, every year they fight over this number and it is a battle. And so fortunately, we have great representation by the Michigan Township Association to fight for that revenue sharing. And they're moving towards establishing a revenue trust fund that will establish a, a secure funding model versus having to go into negotiation. And if you think Lansing works better than Washington. Thank you, Jeff. It's, it's not clean how they do it, but so. I, it, Connie just kind of puts that little line in there with this is what we got. It's a hard font, twenty-two percent. So I just raise that up, just make us aware. So it was empty, alerts come and we say, contact your representative or senator. We need to contact them. It's really critical that we, we fight for that funding to keep our company. And thank goodness we have guys like Roger Victory or Sla on our side, our local representatives to bang up town. I'm sorry, I apologize for taking that. Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the budget. Thank you.
I'll second.
Sure. Okay, all in favor of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget as it stands? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, the motion passes. I'd like to say thank you to Connie for all the hard work. Getting that all buttoned up as carefully and accurately as you do every year. So thank you, Connie.
With a little, oh, very, very much, very good. Connie does a pretty good.
Thank you. Alright, so let's move on to be a race schedule. I think the only thing on that was a couple of things, Mr. Andrew Fink, there was just a couple of things he wanted to mention or to self-explain.
I think it's self-explanatory. If there was one item, if I can draw attention to just one item. And you'll see it's that we have administrative fees on ordinance violations. What we have realized, and I'd like to thank Supervisor School of For bringing. Bringing awareness to the issue. We, we have some properties in town that don't do a great job of keeping up their yard or their. Their properties, if you will. And for the most part. Our community is a beautiful community and most of the people keep their properties quite well. And we don't have a huge issue occasionally with it. And what we realized was when we dug into the fee structure of when it gets pretty significant, we have to go mow the lawn. I acknowledged that our fee structure around that was way too low. So it was almost like we were creating an incentive for people that had figured it out not to go mow their lawn. Because we were doing it really at the cost. And there might have been a little bit of administrative with what we were there. But what we did is Connie and I looked at this. We worked with our staff and said, what are all of the times that go into it? Created a small little formula, identified all of the times that go into it. Now the fees are much more representative of if you're not gonna mow your lawn and it gets to the point where we have to do it for you. It's gonna take a pocket look, as it should, because we don't wanna mow your lawn for you. And when we put it on your taxes, it's not gonna be a small fee on your taxes. It's gonna be like, ooh, next time I'll mow my own lawn. And so that's hopefully a change that will necessitate some better behavior.
Okay, super. Hey, so with that said, your motion to approve the fee structure. Thank you, Jim. Oh, Connor, please, yeah, sure.
It might miss the name or something. Is that?
Kids.
Should there be a bigger differentiation between residents and non-residents? And should it be? And just. Just see.
It's.
Is there rationale or reason behind it?
Mrs. Jordan Zeit and I have talked through it quite a bit. The Motman Center is even less. We wanted to encourage use of the facility in its first year. Other than those two rationalizations, no. I would be very comfortable and it may, I think this is a great conversation for the board to have because it's really a policy issue. I would be very comfortable with a much higher fee if that is the board's interest. If it's really just, we.
We want to use.
We want to use, so, but no, you are correct. It is a very low fee.
Yeah, I think we want it used by the township president to first.
Correct.
Right? I don't get twenty-dollar differential fee between resident and non-resident. It's. Okay, I mean, in the end, it should be.
Okay.
I mean, that would be, and even at one sixty, it's insane target.
Correct.
Right, I mean.
At eighty bucks, it's a massive market.
It's unbelievable. And, and the thing is, we have to be.
Correct.
It is been. Very. It seems. What, what do you have? Hundred dollar for a resident, it's hundred dollars.
Still a hundred.
It is.
And, and, and making reevaluating.
I don't mean to make it prohibitive or anything, but. We have significant investment there. We need to ensure it's safe and fair.
If you haven't said yes, I mean, you didn't get a second on it. Totally, but, oh, I thought you heard me. Hey, do you want to make a motion on that, Brian?
I'd like to make a motion to change the team or the department to turn out the power for residents.
No, I'm sorry. Any questions to answer on the suggestion? Some in motion. Approval of these rate structure with the modification as recommended by Justin Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's, thanks, Brian. Thanks, Brian. Alright. Tokyo Marine. Oh, I'm sorry. Tokyo Marine proposed plain release. People a little bit. Just for the public. I skipped over.
That's why you're in that seat.
I'm just hustling, I'm hustling through, I'm hustling through. So we've scheduled, thank you. This is just a resolution presented by Manager Fink and Connie to say where the ranges are for our team. And any changes or. Observations are on this that we need making. Prove it and then. Support. We have a clear deck and. Yeah. Alright. We're here. And with a note, this is two point six. That was definitely.
I'll support.
Further kind of questions? None, alright. Question, all in favor of this proposal, salary scheduling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, so I'm still. Thank you. I'm gonna get to the right one. Tokyo Marine. Thinking of the agreement. We all had a chance to read that and. Fantastic work through a couple of years by a lot of folks and I. I'd be remiss to start running through these people and miss one. But it was a team effort. Our manager took the lead on this and banged it through. But boy, a lot of folks touched this. And Dan, you're in the middle of it as well. Thank you, Dan. So, man, who would have thought that that would really. Could generate this type of. Final agreement.
Could just say what the amount is.
Yes, for the public, the public, the agreement was that we would settle for a total of four point seven million dollars. After initial payment by the Tokyo Marine for two point three or two point.
Two point three.
Two point range, yeah, yeah. And a few years ago. And the team said that's not enough, so. Well fought by a lot of folks to get to this point. So we have an agreement in front of us to approve this. The board has to approve their agreement. And then we, we'll get our. And put it in the bank. So any other questions or comments about that particular agreement? Hearing? Dan, you have anything to say? No, alright. Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement is written.
Great, thank you for the support. Fantastic. Okay. All in favor of the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, the motion passes and go get the cash, gang. Do we have to, it's like, I need to sign that. You want to, you want to sign, the clerk? And hopefully, let's check it, Mark, because there was an email back and forth about.
The ACH transfer not being able to go to two separate entities. So there might be some changes. I was gonna ask this question, Dan. I don't think realistically there's a change. Fractal agreement, there might be some changes in how the checks are written.
Correct. All the money might come to the township and then the township might give some to the global Midwest.
Correct, okay. That could be taken care of in the back room here.
Correct.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, second page. Is the ordinance amendment to repeal alcohol, liquor on township property. We, we had some discussion behind the scenes. I, I would say Joan and Howard, thank you for bringing up some particulars about what we had proposed. I feel a bit uneasy going forward with something the public hasn't seen for a full, a full week. And we have, this memo is dated today. So I hesitate approving something that the public hasn't seen for a week. So I'd like to have a discussion and then just put it on for final approval next month. That's okay. This, we're not time sensitive on this, but I, I think what, Joan, could you explain what you, what you were aware of and what you tried to use?
The original ordinance that was written up or proposed was to completely repeal the alcohol in liquor ordinance, which said that alcohol was prohibited. The possession, the possession and the consumption of alcohol in all parks and all park township property was prohibited. That was the original ordinance. And so the repeal was just to repeal the entire thing. Well, that would have opened up all of the parks to allow alcohol. For anybody that wanted to. And I could foresee young kids coming and that's just not something we wanted. Our initial goal was to have alcohol at some of the events and facilities that we were renting out to. So Howard made. A change and that's what he handed out. It's at the bottom there in italics. To allow, saying no alcohol, liquor shall be brought into, possessed or consumed in any park or on any other property owned by the township or under its control with the exception of both private and public events housed at either the historic airport hangar. The Motman Center and events related to the Ottawa County Fairgrounds is governed in the lease agreement from the Park Township Board of Trustees for both public and private events housed at the historic airport hangar. And Motman Center alcohol will be permitted within a one hundred foot radius of the property. So I think that's pretty tight and would be acceptable. But then that protects all of our parks. And other facilities when there's not an event going on.
I like the enhancement. Thank you for that.
Dan, you have seen it, uh, with sufficient time. I apologize, but it's just, it's your first glance.
E, it makes more sense than just an automatic repeal.
Which is more legal language is awkward to it.
Well, the, and, and again, I apologize for this, but I, I thought Steve said that you were probably gonna be voted on that next.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. How, how it gave it to me right before the meeting, so.
Let's pause on it and have a further deeper discussion next month, but again, we're not time sensitive. Oh, this, this is a really important.
Very good control of who is serving him or who's observing who's in there. Such as a sheriff or a law duty sheriff. What responsibility does the township have if we no longer have that, if someone uses the Mottman Center? Does the township have any responsibility for now?
Not necessarily. Again, I, I, the, the township isn't going to be, if the township is sponsoring an event. For example, you have some kind of pickleball event here and you've got a beer tent. There's gonna be some responsibility to ensure that people are consuming wisely. Um, typically you have like tips training or other things for servers to make sure people aren't being over served, et cetera. If it's somebody else who is, is having an event. Typically, there's already an event agreement when they're renting out the Mottman Center or renting out the hangar. That shifts the liability onto them to ensure that whoever's serving, whoever their caterer is. That they're the ones that are gonna be responsible for ensuring that they're not over serving people, et cetera. Um, the potential situation is that that could be problematic is if, if it isn't a catered event. And people are bringing their own alcohol onto the property and consuming their own alcohol. Um, there's in a sense, no oversight of that. That's not the township's responsibility necessarily, but you do have, you know, your own premises that you're in control of. You're not the ones that are putting on that event. So again, it's not a township pickleball event. So you don't have what's referred to as like gram shop liability. If somebody drinks and drives, hurts somebody. That's not coming back on the township, but whoever organized that event. If you are having events here that the township is in charge of, you're probably gonna be contracting with the caterer, other people. So you're gonna make sure that there's indemnification clauses there, that their people are trained, that they're not over serving.
We recently reviewed the contracts. I think if we make changes here, we should adjust the verbiage accordingly.
I guess the question is, we're comfortable with this. This is a shift, um, what we've done in the past. We've had a pretty strange, um, letting. Some has been allowed. I guess if the words come with it, that's fine, but this is a big shift. Because I could have a private event at the Mottman Center bringing a keg of beer. And that needs this requirement, uh, but it. Is that the? Is that what the township wants? You know, if it is, great. But I didn't have to think through this and understand that there's a lot of way to it and just. Reading this.
Yep, I can add to that being a liaison for the fair. The beer tent out there, the week of the fair, everybody that serves is tip certified. And that's with the agreement. And the same as you heard with the Celtic Festival, all their people are. So when we serve out there, that's one of our policies. They have to be tip certified. So I don't want, I don't know if you wanna make that in the rental agreement that if you serve it, they should be tip certified. A policy of ours.
These are our good questions. I think it merits us to look into it and, and to modify a sincerity to protect ourselves. I'd rather be tight first and then loose rather than loosen, loose and then tighten later. But, uh, no, I think it's a good point.
And just to be clear. If this does pass, the fairgrounds is still allowed to have if they're in the week of the fair. And on these special occasions like the Celtic Festival, will they still need to come in front of the board to get the okay? Or just come to the manager or whoever's gonna give it the okay for the other?
The way that I wrote it, that the lease agreement governs. So what's in a lease agreement is that they come to the board. So the lease agreement would govern.
Okay.
Cause it says, what I, the way I wrote it is I thought about that. I said, and events related to the Ottawa County Fairgrounds. As governed in the lease agreement from the park township board of trustees.
Perfect, that's what we should be doing. So a lot of details, I appreciate, uh, the comments made and I think it's, uh. Good to get a pause a month and discuss further again next month, so.
I really like the tip certified clause. It's simply good. It prevents. Me from going and getting rickets and my buddies and, and a few hundred bucks to rent the place and have a raid, right?
Exactly.
It changes. It's a good point. Changes.
And when you go to the company to get that license for that beer tent, they like that when it's written on there too.
So if I, if I may ask, uh, Mr. Supervisor, we can just identify whether or not there's consensus to be tip certification for the Mottman Center. And the historic hangar, then we will build that into the ordinance for the.
I like that idea.
Uh, but it's not a vote. It's, I think you've not and, and say this has a proposal on the table for us to consider.
It would be a sense of reassuring.
I think, I think, I think we're not.
Yep. Ask Mr. Martin to prepare that.
So this was a, uh. Yeah, we're not taking action on this. Thank you for the good conversation. I think it's also helpful, uh, Jan, Sarah, that's just the issue that she has a lot of energy on. So next month, I think something. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is the manager's compensation. There was a substitution of a new document that actually identified the movement of, of the, of the managers. Compensation. It's written by me, uh, for the public record, I can give the valuation committee, Enterprise Supervisor Schoolhoff, Trustee Gerard, Trustee Jones. Makes, makes the following recommendation of manager Fink's twenty five, twenty six compensation as part of the overall compensation changes. As part of the overall compensation changes on the entire township staff, we agree to a similar cost of living adjustment of two point. I apologize, in the memo to two point eight, actually two point six of base salary. And then, uh, based on positive evaluation stated by the board, which was in place in two thousand twenty four. Uh, the member doing for the recommendations, one percent increase on base salary. So that was regulation of the three, uh, team member. Evaluation committee. So that's motion to accept or to approve and. Get to our township. Yeah, motion to approve, Jim, thank you.
I'll support.
Thank you, Charlie. All right, any comments or questions on that? Great, all right. Uh, all in favor of the motion on the compensation change for our manager, please say aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. All right, uh, the ESTA policy. Earn sick time.
Yeah, so I would like to turn it over to Ms. Taylor Dykens.
You're so. He knows my, my comfort zone is behind the scenes, thus deputy in front of my name.
She's been actually over the last, uh, day, uh, day and a half, two days, whenever it is, a few days, the week, whatever. She's, uh, she's really diving into this and I appreciate that. And, um, and, uh, she's the, been the one to identify the policy with, with the attorney. And that's, uh, again, appreciated. And so I turned it over to, uh, deputy, uh, Dykens to, uh, present this to you.
Thank you. Um, so February twenty one, twenty twenty five, Michigan imposed the ESTA, um, laws. Uh, after many meetings, Howard and, or manager Fink, clerk Zirip and I, and. I think the Capitol Conference had some things on this as well. I've got, I've been to a chamber meeting, um, with the Michigan Chamber. Um, we handed out, uh. Uh, our policy and our proposed policy, um, earlier. Uh, PTO will stay the same. So the front of the, the sheet. The benefits portion stays the same. The changes will come on the back. Um, we have decided, um, to front load employees with the ESTA. The full time and part time that would normally get paid time off, they'll be front loaded. Um, any other employees part time that will, um, that do not receive PTO. Uh, they'll be front loaded as well based on estimated hours for the year. And then election workers will be earned as they go and then the fire department will have their own policy.
And before we go any further, uh, if I may ask for the board's consideration, why did you choose to front load? All of the employees with the exception of the election workers and. And what, what, why did you make the choice that?
Um, I think that, first of all, as far as time and those types of things. Walking through the earned sick time and, and the amount of paperwork that it will take. And also there is no rollover. So if you front load everybody, nothing rolls over into the following year. So it made it, it made the paperwork and, and, uh, also employees would be able to have that time right away.
The, the reporting requirements is significantly less and we have a very. Boxed staff as it is. And so adding administrative, uh, uh, functions, uh, on our existing tax. Capacity staff is challenging, so.
And, and would. And it wouldn't be a significant cost. By doing it that way.
Correct, cause we, we know even on a, on a part time person, we generally know when a part time person is gonna come in, how many hours is gonna work in there. Or in a half a year. And so, so you know, if we, we get an hour here, an hour there and we miss it, not the end of the world. I believe Ms. Dykens has also put in a policy in there that after a quarter, after every quarter. We can reevaluate based on actual, uh, 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 time work so that we can.
Thank you for the question.
Sure.
Ken, so yeah, but I see in the. Third program down, um, second paragraph from the page time of benefits. It says that, uh, regular full time employees are allowed to pay that four hundred and eighty hours.
Mm-hmm, that is currently our policy.
So something took off.
Something like that, um.
Township authors, or someone took twelve weeks on.
Um, I think when manager Fink and I reviewed that at the beginning, we don't have a short term, um. Uh, what is it? A short term disability? We only have long term disability. So that got us kind of close to where our long term disability would kick in.
The other thing is that you should know as well, it can bank up to four hundred and eighty hours. And I realize that you're asking a different question. Uh, uh, trustee, uh, Gerard, I just wanted to clarify that if you do leave employment, you don't get four hundred and eighty hours. You can only get fifty percent. So just for everybody's benefit, um, but yes, yeah, so that's in a different section. That's not in this section.
It's in the.
Oh, is it?
It's the very last paragraph. Where it states that.
Any hours for those employees that don't have PTO that earn ESTA, they don't, that ESTA time does not get paid out upon severance of employment.
So, so if that time was considered in one of the.
From a vacation standpoint, uh, I believe, uh, I don't have the whole policy in front of me, but I believe that there's. You gotta review that with your supervisor, how you take vacation. So you have to say that you're sick for that amount of time under the ESTA law. Um, if I'm not mistaken, you are allowed to call in sick three times in a row, three consecutive shifts. Not three consecutive days, but three consecutive shifts. So if you're an eight to five Monday through Friday person, that would be, you know, you can call in Monday. Call on Tuesday, you can call on Wednesday. If you then call in on Thursday, then the employer can say, I'd like a doctor's report. Or I'd like the doctor's note. You cannot ask for the first three days. So for example, if somebody comes in sick for, or somebody comes in two hours late and you start asking for reasons for that. Um, you're, you're, you're getting into some really sticky area and most of the attorneys are saying, just let it go. If somebody is coming in late and they say, I wasn't feeling well, just let it be, you know.
But there are specific rules, right? As far as the, the top paragraph of the bottom page, part of the. That you're allowed to use the asset. It's not, it's not a free range. I'm, I'm gonna go to Florida and.
Correct.
Right, I mean, it's, there's, so I think, like, because when I first read it, I had the same concern you did. It's like, look at how this is just a extended vacation policy. But correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there are rules and regulations around it. You can't use it.
Correct, except. Only on the fourth day. So. It used, it used to be that if you told that your employer, let's say, for example. I call you up and I say, hey, uh, trustee super, uh, excuse me, supervisor Schoolhoff. I'm not feeling well and you see me on TV at the Lions game, that's problematic. Now I'd have to call in three days in a row and on the fourth day, you could, you could, you could call me. So there's a little bit more leeway, but not.
Not, because ultimately if, if it's abused, then you've got a performance issue and that's gonna get addressed in a different way.
Exactly. And I will tell you for those who are in the audience. Here we go. Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Uh, I would tell you that for those who are in the audience. We don't, I mean, if somebody calls in sick, we're not.
Yeah, right. Yeah, understood.
This was a topic at the Capitol Conference and it was presented by a lawyer, labor lawyer. It was, uh, it was over an hour of confusing, um, discussion. And so it's not clear how it was rolled out. It could all, it was all bugged up, uh, when the law was approved. And so I think this year everyone's trying to figure this one out. And I think we're on that, we're in this vote as well. So I, I would highly recommend that we approve it as it stands and, uh. Uh, let's learn from this first year. And honestly, I think the entire state of Michigan is gonna be learning about this law.
This is very similar to what my employer rolled out the day that it was passed, so.
With that, Charlie, make a motion to.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve. The, um. ESTA rules as presented.
Any further comment about the, the motion? Uh, does that, would it put us in a, uh, a pension we delayed or do we need to implement the balance? We have, we have to. I respect that term of murder. All right, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, moving on to the next item, uh, it was our pleasure this past week to, uh, interview. For a, uh, appointment for the here district library board. And so, uh, the president of the here library, uh, board, Jim. Uh, joined us for those, um, things, uh, for those interviews and, uh, it's our pleasure to recommend. After these interviews, uh, uh, the candidate, Tammy Hillen. And it was a pleasure meeting four different candidates from our township who were interested in joining the library board, which is a pretty significant commitment. I thought it was like, you know. Meeting every couple of months and this and that, but it's a, a monthly meeting with a committee meeting every month. So this, this is a big deal. So I celebrate what Tammy is walking into. The way the board is set up, there's four communities that are represented on the Hare Public Library, and we're one of them, and we also, therefore, we pay a bill, and so we have two candidates, or two representatives on the board. And Tammy is replacing, I apologize, Danielle, you had the name of that person who has stepped down. Lynn Britian, I just want to recognize Lynn Britian for her service. Yeah, she moved. Okay, I'll recognize Lynn and thank her for her service, and I would be sending her a thank you note on that. But she is being replaced by another capable person, Tammy Hillen. So I'll take a moment. I will make a motion on this one, because I had the pleasure of meeting Tammy. So I'll make a motion to approve Tammy Hillen as our representative on the Hare Public Library.
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor of Pammy Hillen as a representative?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll post. Thank you. Sure, please.
Just for those members in the audience, it is the policy of this board, and it's been a policy of previous boards, that all appointed opportunities are advertised in our community. And I just want to say, we often hear about the lack of participation in our local governments. It's not true here in Park Township. When we put out calls for service to the community, we receive very qualified, excellent people that step up and say, I would like to serve. And so I know there's the illustrious reporter in the audience, and I just want to point out and throw out there that, you know, we welcome people to encourage them to serve, and we hope when we put out those calls to, for appointments, that we get lots of applicants and resumes. We love, we love seeing so many people wanting to serve our local community. So thank you.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is summer tax collection. I don't have any paperwork in our packet on this one.
It should be in your updated packet.
Well, updated.
And I have copies of you.
I'm looking at my computer, and I know, thank you, Jim. And so every year, we do have a West Ottawa does a election, so this is, no.
No.
This is tax, that's right. This is collecting the taxes, this is not for election. Thank you. Alright, so obviously I'm coming in a little blind, so I was reading them wrong. So this is fee for collecting their summer taxes. We just had that motion to approve the fee, the contract. Please.
We raised it within the past year. We did. It was three and a half dollars, so no great compensation.
I may not answer that, Mr. Supervisor. Yes, trustee Gerard, I inquired with treasurer Steggerda yesterday on this. Inquired that this was raised last year, the year before, it was negotiated. The treasurers got together with the schools, and they had decided that they were going to do this for a few years. And so this is within that timeframe. And I said, and I, you know, again, asked that it be, you know, at the appropriate time to be renegotiated, and she said the treasurers will, will do that, you know, the time period is up, that kind of sense. So I did ask about that. So that, you know, that makes sense.
If, if I can ask for clarification, so is it three twenty five or is it three fifty? Yeah.
Oh, going back memory, because I think.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was in the twos, a year or two ago.
Okay.
Two seventy five, isn't it?
Thank you for the clarification. It's alright.
Alright, so again, the motion, or assuming the opportunity to approve this, is on the floor, the motion to approve. Thanks, Brian. Hey, all in favor of the tax.
Hi.
Post, hearing none of the motion passes. Thank you. Alright, we're going to go into a brief closed session. And I can say brief, because we're going to be right back this year, sorry to keep this meeting. So we can see the submission. Consider this section eight ID or one D of the O V E S Act, MCC fifteen point two six eight one D, the purchase or lease of real property up to the time in option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained. So it's a closed session. We need to do a roll call vote on this, so make a motion to, I have motions out there. Do it every second. Support, Brian, thank you. And the roll call vote, please.
Okay, trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Gerard.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Cernag.
Yes.
Trustee Stegget is, is absent on clerk Zero, yes, and supervisor Spulhoff.
Yes.
We're going to go into closed session again. For that brief closing session, and we need to make a motion to come back into closed session quite early. Like I made a motion that we remember in session. Great, thank you.
Support.
Hey, all in favor of coming back into overflipping today? You're number back in the session. Thank you. The discussion. Okay, so discussion possible, actually, we're going to need. Was by, by the main. So we're moving through item A, and then move to item B. So thank you, manager Fink, for helping us identify the O V R C D action plan. And this is the item which had a lot of stuff in our packet, and you know, from the Mac, it was like the last seventy pages of our deal. And having been at the Mac now a couple of months, and Jim, you have heard these song and dances for four years at the Mac. That we'd be very proud of our Mac, our Mac, how very important it is. Works very hard to identify road issues, and Ottawa Beach Road continually shows up on the, what they call like the hot spot. The high, the high injury network, hot spot, we see those words in the in the report, the Mac report that you had in the packet. And so it is identified very clearly in our community as a road that needs some action. And one of the solutions is a road diet. That's a new one for me, up until about two months ago. But a road diet, and we have an expert in the audience who has waited patiently to school us on what a road diet is. So I would invite this gentleman to apologize. I shook your hand by remembering his first name.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Matthew Hill. I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Michigan, Minnesota and Illinois. Been doing traffic operations and safety for over twenty years. So, and yeah, the ask, Howard had reached out to me through some other connections I have here in the community and some work that I've done here in the Holland area, to kind of take a look at what was being proposed by the Ottawa County Road Commission and their pilot road diet that they were offering to do. And just see if that would be, you know, potentially a safer configuration than what's out there today, because as you guys pointed out, it shows up on the high crash.
Do you have a cross promoting? Can you explain what that, for those who are listening online and those in the audience, what are, what we're talking about in Ottawa Beach Road? Can you verbally share what you're describing?
Yep, I can do that. So today, Ottawa Beach Road is two lanes in both directions, so it's a four lane section, two lanes eastbound, two lanes westbound. And what the Road Commission is proposing is what we call road diet. So it's changing that laneage out there. So it would go to two lanes eastbound, a center left turn lane, and then one lane westbound. So you go from two lanes down to one lane in westbound, and that allows you to put in that center left turn lane. And a lot of times when they do these road diets, the goal is to kind of remove those left turn movements from the through traffic, separate them out by adding that left turn lane. So inherently, most of these are generally safer. There's been a lot of research done. Say, in the last twenty years, the turn road diet isn't brand new, but if you're not in the industry, you may not be, you know, well versed in it. But a lot of times, you're going from four lanes down to one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. And that also offers up some opportunities for some non motorized treatments in the future, if that's something the community desires. The reason the Road Commission, Howard allowed me to kind of touch base with the Road Commission to get some context as to why they're not going down to one lane in both directions. Had to do more with, when you take the striping off, it is a treatment that does kind of have some destructive nature to it. And doing that to get to one lane in both directions for a pilot program, you know, you'd see that. You'd also still have the existing joints in the roadway itself. And anybody that's probably driven through a construction work zone at night or in the rain knows that it can be hard to see that striping when it's temporary like that. So they had offered, if it's successful and, and township wants to move forward with the pilot as they've proposed, that they'd be open to looking at doing one lane in both directions at the time that roadway is repaved in the future.
I had a conversation with Jason over at Mac, and to his leader of the Mac, very adept at this, he actually changed a road down in Bering Springs, using this road diet strategy, it saw an improvement, reduction speed and improvement of safety. So there's, there's data, and I'm sure Matt, you have seen that as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's some general rules of thumb. There's a lot of research out there now from both FHWA and, and private universities, and they all kind of come in around, if you've got twenty thousand vehicles per day on your roadway or less, these things usually trend to improve safety when you do these roadway diets. I think the last numbers I saw for you guys, you're around twelve thousand, so kind of well below that. So wouldn't anticipate, but every roadway is unique and different. That's why they do a pilot. But yeah, generally, they look at about eighteen percent or forty percent. That's kind of the range of improvement in crash reduction when they implement these treatments.
Questions, questions from Matt, please.
So you said there's a, you're, you're looking at probably an eighteen percent reduction?
That would be generally on the low end. Yeah.
Okay. And then what is the accident rate at this point?
I didn't pull any of your crash statistics, other than I know that in the last five years, there's about one hundred and fifty crashes or something on that segment of roadway.
Are, a question, are they going to do the same thing from one forty fourth to River? So it's, it's only going to affect the stretch that's in Park Township?
Yeah, just the stretch from one hundred and sixtieth on the west end to one hundred and forty fourth on the east end. So west of one hundred and sixtieth, it's currently one lanes in each direction, and then east of one hundred and forty fourth, it would remain a, a four lane section.
Just for the board's edification, I've been advocating for this. I think you guys are aware of this, because I sent, have sent you email after email after email for the last four years on road diets. I wanted to bring it back here, because this is a big change, and Matt is an expert. All, all of our research, every, every traffic engineer that has ever looked at this road has indicated that a road diet would be successful. Every single executive director of the Mac after Steve Bullseye. Because all of this, Steve wasn't a traffic engineer, so it's not reflective of Steve, but every executive director of the Mac has suggested a road diet on Ottawa Beach Road. Some of them have suggested it go much further out, which is why I think Joan was asking. But we only control, or we only would advocate for what is in Park Township. I am very thankful and very happy, and I want to acknowledge the Road Commission for hearing the concerns and offering this as an opportunity, should the board so choose to, to do it.
Now, add to, just for some context, maybe more so for the folks at home, but an example of where a roadway diet was done here locally would be Eighth Street.
Correct.
Over in Holland between Chicago and US thirty one, where they changed that from four lane to one lane each.
This is not, this is not something that was, has only been done in other regions of the country. Even the folks at the Road Commission are very knowledgeable on how these processes work. One was recently done, and so we were successful in changing perspectives and maybe moving the needle on culture.
And again, it's a pilot. You know, if, if the pilot does not work, then we stripe it back to four lanes.
Correct. Yeah, it's.
But this is, this is, it, it is in some sense a prototype machine. But it can be done through a very simple process, is just restryting the lanes.
And who determines if the pilot was successful?
Ultimately, the Road Commission will determine if the pilot is successful, but I would encourage our board to dig a little deeper into the issue of road safety analysis. It's even as a layperson, it's, it's not insurmountable. It's something that we can all understand by understanding the crash history, understanding, you know, the, the volumes and whatnot. And so I would encourage you to ask for those, those numbers and hold me and the Road Commission accountable to, to continue to look at this, to show that it is in fact working. But ultimately, Jim, it is, it is the Road Commission's decision if, if it works or not.
And if I may, Howard, I would totally agree with you. Coming from the automotive industry and being somebody who was responsible at my company for reviewing crash data from, there's, the Ann Arbor Hospital keeps track of the entire state's crash data, injuries in vehicles and what happens. So any improvement is, is well warranted. I've got one question for you, Matt, on how long does it take for the residents who use that road to acclimate to a new setup?
Yeah.
Does it take a long time? Will they get it right off the bat? What's your experience?
Yeah, great question. Not generally. You're, like I say, when you do these, you generally see a reduction in speeds. If there's a lot of, every road's kind of unique. There's a lot of mail truck or garbage trucks and driveways on the segment with just one lane in that direction, that might take a little bit of getting used to.
We do have school buses.
Right. But generally, you know, it's, it's a pretty quick learning curve.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So this is a possibly, it's on discussion, a possible accident. Hearing, hearing the discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve this, and, and we would send a message, message back to the Ottawa County Road Commission that were on board with their suggestion. But I'm hoping to a motion or not. So how's the board feel about this recommendation?
I feel good about it, and I would make a motion, put on the floor, that we go ahead, excuse me, that we go ahead and ask the Road Commission to utilize a pilot program and see how the traffic acclimates, and how we may get a reduction in speed and injuries.
I'll support that motion. I have one question.
Discussion. If this pilot, sorry, I. If this pilot program is successful, is it an automatic given when you resurface Ottawa Beach Road in the future that it will go to one lane each direction, or will we have to go through the board again?
I'd like to speak to the microphone a little bit. We have some people on.
Yeah, it, it would still be a discussion with the, the Road Commission, given their ownership of the roadway, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing's a done deal, as I found in road order. Have to keep working at it. So we have motion on the floor. Any further questions on the motion?
So how long, how long does the pilot last?
The pilot functionally is going to last probably about four to five years.
Four to five years.
Again, the Road Commission is in control, and that wasn't something that was asked. What we, if you look in your packets, the most recent email from Matt, I talked with Mr. Hill, and we asked the question, why not? Why, why the choice of this pilot? Because I had been asking for the full road diet. One way going towards the lake, one way going away from the lake, one way east, one way west with a middle turn lane. One way going uh towards the lake, one way going away from the lake, one way east, one way west with a middle turn lane. And the recommendation was because what Matt had indicated, if the road commission does that, then they're gonna create delamination in the road, and they're concerned with. deterioration of the road surface, and so they, in their email, it says. Um that Matt had contacted Fred, and if this works, when the re- when the road needs to be resurfaced, which would be about four to five years. They will look at doing the full road diet, if it doesn't work, or if they feel like it hasn't been successful. At that time, that's when they might look to put it back to the four lane configuration, we don't have a. Clear highlight on that, I would, I would, I would, I would uh uh suggest it's probably four to five years.
So I'm not saying it's gonna be a bad thing, but if it is a bad thing, we're stuck with it for four to five years?
We could petition the road commission to put it back.
Okay, and then who who do they keep track of the data, I'm I'm a data person.
They keep track of the data, but this is something that, as I indicated before, hold us accountable and ask for the data every six months.
Okay.
And then that could be helpful in 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 securing that data as well.
Okay, and what is our outcome, or uh eighteen percent reduction, or what are we looking for as a board?
Well, he said eighteen to forty.
Say those are the general trends, yeah, and also had that crash data information is available publicly. Um it's a Michigan Traffic Crash Facts dot org is the website, it's usually about a six month lag um each year, so. Once a year rolls around, six months goes by and they usually have the previous year in there, so.
Repeat that?
Yeah, it's Michigan Traffic Crash Facts dot org, all one word.
And I believe those crash statistics are also on the road commission's website as well, so. We can get you that as as we go.
Because personally, I think it's a a great idea to attempt something different than expecting this, that it's something to change. And I think this is a significant change on that road that allows us to to see if this works. And if it doesn't work and everyone complains about it, a year from now, we go, okay, road commission, I think we we gave it a good go. Uh and you can restripe the lines, but I think that the experts in the field are saying that this type of. Configuration will slow things down, and I I I I think we just have to. We have to try something, expecting, you know, our policemen to get more tickets and have more impact on crash data and speeds is a a lofty. Uh lofty expectation of of law enforcement, they they can't be there all the time, so I'm I'm excited about having a structural change to lanes and. The experts are saying you're gonna see a difference, so I'm optimistic.
And.
How can we?
How can we communicate this then to the township, because I mean, I I see the data, I I I see that side of it. But I'm not sure the township will see that side of it.
So one of, so if I may, I I wrote it as a right, so one of the, I I thought about that actually uh yesterday. And one of the reasons why I put in a preemptive phone call to the Holland Sentinel and specifically asked for the reporter for the onslaught to be here. This is one of the reasons why the young lady is in the back on the left, because I wanted her to hear this conversation with respect to. Our belief that this is going to reduce speeds, improve safety. Reduce crashes and ultimately save lives, and so I wanted her to hear that and have that conversation, so I. Creatively uh asked for uh the Holland Sentinel to be here, and I am hopeful, although we all know that. Uh it is ultimately the newspaper's decision, but we're hopeful that that this would be um a a major story.
So I'm sensing there's still a lot of dialogue to have, was my motion premature? Okay.
Was, is that?
I mean, I I think that's nice, I I'd love to see something in the township newsletter or on the website or something, right, with some of that supporting data and document that we didn't take this lightly and. That there's thought that went into it and that it's an evaluation period.
Yep.
Right.
And that's specifically why when I talked to the supervisors pool off about this, I absolutely emphatically said, no, this is not coming from me. This is going to come from an expert, and we're gonna, that's why we gave a wire with Mr. Hill and paid for Mr. Hill to be here. And um so because I, you're right, it it should not come from a layperson, this is a major change.
Mm-hmm.
And it should not come from a layperson to uh have this as a major change in our community. And so I wanted to make sure before we even agreed to this, does the expert um uh suggest that this is the way to go? So you all know, Matt talked about it earlier, Matt had done work with Mika Weiss, her community development director, and her former capacity as a transportation player. She also thinks that this is a great idea, but she is the one who recommended Matt specifically to analyze this, um and so. I really trust this recommendation.
If I could take your question farther, right, and we tapped the manager to put together a quick. Public PR campaign, so the folks who go to the website will see it on our in their email.
It's kind of summary of understanding, right, that that there was, here's here's what we were seeking to do, here's how we went about the process, here's the data that supports it. Trial period, we're gonna see whether or not it works.
Yeah, so you heard that, alright. So maybe give a date, because I heard that I heard April or May when they restryted, it could happen for some reason. Yeah, uh I think, yes, I don't know exactly, but it was sooner than later, yeah. No, I think we ought to get on top of the communication talk, but I would like the uh task.
Yeah, I think that's great.
The manager and the.
I just, I'd rather head it off at the pass than have to defend the action after the fact.
Well said, yeah, well said.
I think it'll be well received by a lot of the community members, we've all heard complaints on speeding and how to reduce that. The racing that happens along that road, I'm hoping that this nips that in the body.
At least one direction.
At least one direction, they will not race.
Alright, so we've had a lot of discussion, uh motion. We uh paperwork, so any further discussions or questions? See, and then I'll I'll call for the question and the motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, great, thank you, I wouldn't want to be that that made on safety issue.
No, I just wanna, I just, I just want to make sure it's gonna be of just something that's useful.
Alright, so um that's it, up to the managers' report.
Yeah, so let's start with uh, let's start with one of the things that we're working on in addition to the road diet. Uh one of the things that will be in front of you next month. Uh is the purchase of digital speed devices permanently mounted in three sections along Ottawa Beach Road. As you will see, I have heard loud and clear the concerns of speed on Ottawa Beach Road, I cannot change the speed limit. The speed limit is governed by the eighty fifth percentile within the state of Michigan, which has to be a joint decision between the road commission, state police, and local municipality. And we don't end up getting studies that show a speed of the eighty fifth percentile less than forty-five miles an hour, or in some sections forty. This may actually change that, this configuration may slow people down, which then in turn may in fact. Have the potential of lowering the speed limits in the future, one of the things that we know is scientifically proven to work. Is digital speed monitoring, a few months ago in the budget, you authorized for a purchase of two new. Uh speed trailers to be used throughout the township, we are going to request. That we take those additional speed trailers and use them throughout our township, and then we have. Three sections, two each, so six permanent. Be digital speed signs along Ottawa Beach Road strategically placed with recommendations from specifically from trustee, or from uh Deputy Jones. It's his expertise of where they should be located, we already have those locations, uh Deputy Jones is working on those quotes. Uh and those will be in front of us at the next board meeting, so we're, we are moving and hearing the community. This traffic and the speed on Ottawa Beach Road is too fast, and we need to slow it down. So with that, uh that's the first step, uh pickleball, we uh have decided after much debate and discussion. To hire our own pickleball person, uh so we are not gonna have a contract. Uh 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 with a company, uh we're not going to go out with uh. Uh other entities, we are gonna bring in a revenue neutral or revenue positive part-time person. Uh for a few hours a week in the summertime, probably eight hours a week, and they are gonna design our leagues. Those leagues are gonna be designed for uh the benefit of our residents, and we are going to ensure. That there are open courts when we are playing leagues, that nobody will be turned away when we want to go play pickleball. And I and Jordan will both make sure of that with signage, and we will even have people out there, either her or I. Uh on tournament days or on league days periodically. Um.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
Unless, of course, the courts are full, then you might get turned away.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
Just, just so people hear that.
Yes, yes.
There are precautions.
Yes.
There are, yes, but we are doing, we are going to work and do so on behalf of the residents. Uh in front of you, uh is, we are not asking for any action tonight, but I'd like you to digest it. I think it is time for us to engage a human resources consultant, we all have great confidence in Kurt Lawson. We've all known Kurt, some of you have relationships with Kurt, I have known him to be a good, ethical, experienced individual. My recommendation at the next meeting will be to sign the contract that is in front of you to begin the engagement with Mr. Kurt Lawson. To have HR services and capability within a function, there are a number of things that we need to get done. There are a number of things that I think this board would be benefited, would be benefit from, and one of those frankly is. The ability to have a mediator when there are discussions that are challenging amongst the board. Or whether or not when there are discussions with the manager and the board and so on and so forth, it is a good policy that we have somebody. Uh that we can go to uh as an HR specialist, and it is probably at this point, we are a a large enough community. Where we need HR representation when it uh uh serves us, and we would have somebody on call to go ahead and do that. The other thing that this company does is provide, you know, salary compensation studies, uh they are locally based. So there is confidence of who you are using, um and so there are a number of things that I think will benefit the board. Uh and benefit uh us as a team uh engaging them as we do forwards, and that's in front of you. I have uh uh I just want to say personally, there are some items on this agenda. And I'm gonna say this, um this is just me personally talking, in my eight and a half years of being here. I think the last six months to a year is probably some of the best leadership work I've done for this community. And I have been reminded by a few of my colleagues and mentors that no one's gonna uh sing your praises, so you might as well pat yourself on the back. There are some things on this agenda that I have worked tirelessly for this community for years, the community center being one of them, this road diet being another. Um and uh and the post guard station coming up being something that uh the chief and I uh have spent tremendous amounts of time on. So I just want to acknowledge um this uh for me has felt like a really substantial year. Uh in my both professional and personal growth, so thank you for allowing me to serve this community, I truly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Uh and with that, I will close.
Any questions for the manager, I have a quick question, please.
While back, we okayed, I believe it was two cameras. Along the roadways in park, and I'm seeing them pop up in Holland Township and Allendale, did, where did we put those two cameras?
That is a good question, I'm gonna defer to uh super, uh Deputy Jones, we did pay for those cameras, those are the um.
The flock.
Flock camera, I have heard that the supervisor, or excuse me, the sheriff has had issues with some of the administrative stuff around flock, I I noticed that in. Um some some uh documentation, so I don't know, uh uh yes, please, if you'd mind.
People.
Uh well, as far as administrative issues, that would be above my pay grade, I'm afraid, I'd have to defer to the sheriff on that one. Um but the Park Township did agree to buy two cameras, uh license plate reader cameras essentially. Um and I, as far as I know, those have not been put up yet, but it should be soon. Uh I will say, I just got a new cruiser today, uh and it has the Axon system that has a license plate reader built into my my cruiser now.
Oh, and your cruiser is now black, right?
It is now black.
And it was white, if I remember correctly, right?
I'm all stealthy now.
You are now, because I think uh uh um Officer Jones was like the only person with the left with the white cruiser account.
Very true.
Time I knew, was driving by, I knew who you were, now I won't know who's who anymore.
Yeah, it's true, uh just wave.
Do you remember those two spots where those cameras?
Yeah, I think they were gonna be east and westbound at Waukesha and OBR.
Okay.
Good question, Lauren, I was wondering the same.
Thanks for following, alright, we're to see how they work, alright, uh. We'll go, uh we're into board comments, no, I'm sorry, public comment, public comment, uh we're open public comment again, if anyone's interested in commenting. Doesn't look like anyone's interested in commenting, we'll close the public comment, alright. So now we're into uh board comments and committee agency reports, we'll start right at the auto county fair board.
There's nothing to report on on the fair, but I'm guessing in another month, there're gonna be storage units coming out, boats, trailers, and. No blessing of the bikes, but the first thing this year is gonna be two at a time camping, so we got a little bit of time yet. And then the ZBA, Mika did a fine job in her report, so I'm not gonna redo that, so.
Any other comments or?
Nope.
We'll go down to the line there, Joe.
Um on the West Michigan Airport Authority, I put a a copy of the minutes in front of you, so you can read through um some of the things that we've been working on.
Did they get closer to a leader, or are they?
They're still working on it, yeah.
Next to me, I'll be at the last, Jim, hey, how was you went to?
Oh, I went to the MAC and you could see the uh the paper there, everything passed, and that's all I have.
Great, thanks, Char, how's the planning commission?
Planning commission's great, I got a couple of notes here, um two items discussed, um. It was asked that we rezone an area from agriculture to um permanent open space and R three to R four. And um that is not outside the bounds of the master plan, so it was agreed to and approved. Um. A lot of people spoke, I I was amazed at how many people came to that meeting and um lots of questions. And it mainly concerned um tree loss and wildlife loss. Um so I'm certain there's gonna be more to come on that, and then also um several comments. On the increase of traffic with a new development, because it's gonna be more homes going in there.
Where in particular is this, just please?
It is off Butternut on the north side of. One forty-second, I'm not, I didn't write that down.
There was out of the schools.
It is, correct. Um the second item was the discussion of the Trailview site plan, it's a preliminary PUD. It's going to be a condominium unit development of single family condos. Um what's interesting about this development is the landowner has donated or is going to donate um. A significant portion to Riley Trails, and we'll have a trailhead off that neighborhood into the. The 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 trail system there, um I I think that's a pretty neat amenity, and you know. I like to see landowners giving something back to the community instead of always asking for stuff, so that was great. Um again, lots of discussion on trees, and I think we hammered that home that they're not gonna be taking down trees or doing any. Anything until they give us plans of what one, what they want to put in there. I think it's gonna be um overall a pretty cool site, aside from that, I've got two other items. Um I was recently made aware of a disruption in Waukesha Woods area with um a development and. With, um, a development and lighting which drove away, um, a nationally protective eagle's nest. And they have vacated it and Owls have now taken it over. But, um, my first concern is I hope we don't get a fine from the government for doing this. And I just started investigating. I've asked several questions and I don't have answers back yet, but, um, hopefully soon I will.
Okay, so before you go any further, if I may.
Yes.
Mister Supervisor, um, for your own protection, okay? I would suggest that you pause your investigation, you turn your investigation over to Cal Cuny. We, you and I can set up a meeting with Mr. Cuny. Um, and if you feel like you want other people there, that is totally appropriate, I think we should start with Cal. And then that the investigation should be from the township. As a representative of the township, you do not wanna put yourself in a position to sort of be both. Uh, uh, judge, mature.
Yeah, I, I don't plan on being that. I was just looking for an understanding.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I think that's fantastic because all of us in this, in this board would say that's not appropriate. If, if that is in fact like, so let's get with Cal Cuny.
Yep.
Let's, let's let Cal do his work. Uh, Officer Jones is in the audience, so he will know about this. Uh, eagles are a big deal and so we will, we will take all precautions necessary, but yeah.
Okay.
Excellent. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's kind of after the fact now, because it's already happened.
Right.
And, um. As far as I know, eagles don't look to see if they should come back to their old nest or not, so I don't know where they would have relocated to. Um, and then the last item, last month, we discussed putting a pause on the RFQ for the, um, community center. Did that require a vote? I don't remember voting on it. I just remember us discussing it.
Any, any decision has to be made. No, I'm okay. I, I, but I'm not like hearing my own. Is it? Any decision has to be made. If, if. I don't think that there was a decision to do an RFP to pull it back. So if you're discussing, discussing things and not deciding to do something, like take non-action. Somebody might try to argue that that's a decision that you're making to do nothing. I don't know that it's actually a decision to be made. In other words, if you've been discussing, hey, we're thinking of doing a community center. We've had a committee that's kind of created and making a recommendation that we put out an RFP for people. To come to us to build a community center. And the board is basically talking about this and saying, we don't think we should do the RFP. In, in my mind, even though there's been a recommendation that you do an RFP, if you guys basically discuss it and say. We don't think we need to do an RFP, then a vote not to do an RFP doesn't need to be made. But if there are concerns that you're violating the Open Meetings Act, you could reenact it. And I would recommend, again, I know your, your rules basically say we're not gonna put an action item on the agenda. If it hasn't been placed on the agenda unless we discuss it and approve the agenda, you don't have it on the agenda tonight. But it, it's, it's kind of like saying, hey, we're talking about doing something. We're not gonna do that something that we talked about doing. Do we need to have a vote to say we're not gonna do what we talked about we might do? There are all kinds of decisions that are being made, decisions are required to be made by vote. But it's, it's in a sense deciding not to do something. So I, I don't know that a vote would be necessary.
Yeah, I was.
If all you're doing is not taking action.
So we approved funds for it to be done and it has been done and paid for, I'm assuming. But to your point, you're like, what do we do with it now? And that, it was the discussion to be had.
There's, I don't believe there's any funds that have been paid. We paid for the RFP, but we haven't paid any of the entreats.
Correct. You, no, no, you're correct. We, we paid land to go through and develop the.
Yeah, and, and so you're basically then at the point, like, does the board want to act to publish an RFP? And if the board isn't acting to do anything, because the board acts their motions at its minutes. But if you're ultimately of a mind that we don't want to either pass a motion or not pass a motion. You, you don't, I mean theoretically, somebody could have made a motion to do it and it failed. Somebody could have made a motion not to do it. But like, no action has been taken. Deliberation regarding it was done at an open meeting.
Okay.
In, in my mind, if, if no decision is being made, no vote is necessary.
Thank you for the clarification.
The, uh, the ARQ and the publication of it, excuse me, the, the pause letter and the communication has become public. I have received half a dozen, uh, verbal, uh, 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 two voicemails, uh, three texts and two emails. All affirming these, the pause. And so I have no one to say, I said, hey, keep on going. So I think, I think it was well received that the board, as a board, agreed to pause, not kill. Pause the process until we have a clear direction on recreation. So I think we, uh, have been.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm done. Thank you.
I don't have anything this time.
Thanks.
I took you.
It's all good.
A couple of things, uh, something to consider we do. Uh, Andrew Fink and I were discussing, we probably should put a name on the historic tenure for your contribution. Uh, so one thought is to use the call letters of the airport. H L M, H L M Center, H L M Panger or something like that. A lot of this, a lot of this is hanging out there for a couple of months before we buy any sign. But H L M is the name that they were called for fifteen years or so.
That was one of the names submitted to call the complex as a whole. Yeah.
Uh, just a reminder, uh, I hope you're considering, uh, attending the MTA conference on Tuesday and Wednesday, Wednesday. There's so much to learn and it's spread out the back door, so please continue to consider, put that on your calendar. I attended a meeting that is, was hosted by, uh, the county chair of the members. There's a lot of discussion about, uh, the new term is not homeless, it's unhoused. So the unhoused, so they're trying to bring all the community groups together. We are part of the larger community. Um, and we do see it when we go through town that there's some increased unhoused people. And, uh, there is a significant effort, uh, to, uh, coordinate. Collaborate and, you know, communicate and also deliver services to help people. Um, catch phone update, I sent a note to you all that you can contact next week from this Kelvin University group. That's doing a, some research for us, uh, and they're really pleasant. And I've had some deep conversations with them over the last three weeks and they would like to hear our opinion. And so as a memo to you is to just, uh, think neatly about where recreation, uh, could be, should be. And, uh, give them your thoughts as represented by so many voters. Uh, you have, you here and you have an opinion, certainly lie here. You can do it any way you would like, a phone call when you drive sharp or a video call or whatever's convenient for you. And, uh, make it, make it easy for you to offer a, if you want to be with them individually or, you know, they're there. So if you're on your way through, you can talk to them. So very personal, that was important. So they'll be coming to our April meeting to give us a comment track, uh, results. So, uh, gives us a chance to kind of see, uh, what our community wants, that they're working for Jordan, or will be working more for Jordan. So we're excited about having that as a resource. Um, the, uh, next item, uh, the next work session is about the sheriff's, uh, the sheriff contract. As you recall, we had a discussion here in our budget, uh, a budget discussion about, uh. At some point, we're gonna be in the upside down situation financially. Um, there's been quite a bit of discussion over the last week. Uh, and like yesterday morning, I made in a conversation with, uh, Sheriff DeBoer and his under sheriff, Dave. And it was very helpful, uh, thanking Connie for helping us understand the financial impact of, of different solutions that a sheriff has offered. And we will have that, uh, ready for you to understand next week, Thursday. This is, this is above my pay grade. It is becoming clearer that we need to have a fuller discussion as a board about what, uh. How we provide safety in our community. And, uh, the addition of our, uh, medical staff, the EMT. It does put a financial pressure, um, on us and we need to, uh, understand what the correct coverage is. So, uh, by next week, we'll have information to help us all. Learn together and then make a proper decision. Sheriff DeBoer was very helpful yesterday and, uh, gave us a number of options. Stay tuned, uh, that, so that would be, uh, next week's work session. And that's probably one of the most important things that we'll discuss ultimately. And then, uh, next week, if time permits, uh, we'll talk about the coast guard station plan as well as, uh, if you have time, I'll establish. Uh, uh, roll out on that. But then I have nothing else. Oh, I had that, went to the MAC, it's actually quite fascinating to learn about safety, you know, in roads. So, you know, I don't understand it all, but, right? So the now taking motion to, uh, sure.
Still moved?
Support.
Great, thank you. Alright, I'll definitely say aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Vivian, thanks for.
Yes, thank you for your preparation.